Good evening and welcome to the 2024 Wentzville School District Board of Education Town Hall. Tonight, questions submitted by you will be answered by the upcoming school board election candidates. My name is Faith Bott. I'm a junior at Wentzville Liberty High School and I will be one of tonight's moderators.
And I'm Caitlin McDonald, also a junior at Wentzville Liberty High School and your other moderator for tonight. This event is produced, directed, and assembled by our amazing team of students and sponsored by LHS Publications.
Before we begin, please share to follow us on Facebook at WSDBOE Town Hall for all information regarding the town hall, recaps of tonight's event, and election updates.
This evening's questions were based upon responses from a survey sent out to the constituents of Wentzville School District. The most popular topics from the survey, as well as each candidate's campaign platforms, were considered into the creation of tonight's event.
In part one of tonight's event, all candidates will be asked five general questions. Following the fifth round of questions, there will be a 10-minute intermission before we move on to part two. In part two, each candidate will be asked five viewers submitted questions that were determined during the intermission. All candidates will receive the same question.
Throughout part one of tonight's event, you can submit questions of your own through the link at the bottom of your screen. Please keep all questions relevant and appropriate, as these will be at student event coordinators will be picking from for part two of tonight's event.
Thank you all for joining us this evening. We will now introduce two of our 2024 WSD school board candidates. All candidates were invited to tonight's event. However, two of the candidates, Lee Pollich, was unable to make it and Cindy Reedy was contacted multiple times with no response. Each candidate has 60 seconds to introduce themselves before the first round of questions begin. We will start with Mr. David Bezenthal.
Hi, good evening. My name's David Bezenthal. I just want to start by saying thank you to the students here at Liberty for putting this on tonight. I'm very much looking forward to it. I am a parent of two WSD students, a kindergartner and a fifth grader at Prairie View Elementary. By day, I am a high school business teacher, where I have been in the Fort Zumalt School District for the last 15 years. And overall, I'm quickly approaching 20 years of classroom experience as an educator.
My name is Brad Welch. I want to say thank you guys for putting this on. We get to do a lot of things. This is by far my favorite event of this kind of campaign is getting to interact with you guys and have you guys do something that's fun for you guys as well, too. So, thank you. I'm Brad Welch. I'm running. I've got two kids in the district, both in elementary school. So, I'm invested in making sure they have a fantastic school district. My mother was in public education for over 40 years. My wife used to be in education as a secondary English teacher. And I know the struggles that teachers are going through right now, administration's going through right now, support staff's going right now. We need people on the board that are going to work together so we can make school better for our students, for our teachers, administrators, and staff, so.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. On behalf of LHS Publications, we would like to thank both of you for coming out tonight and participating in this event. We will now begin the first round of questions. You'll each have 90 seconds to answer during this round.
For all rounds of questioning tonight, we will go in a predetermined order. We will call on you when it is your turn to speak. Here's your first question.
During this current school year, there have been some concerns about the privacy of the students within the district. Because of those concerns, changes have been made to try and increase student privacy, specifically regarding data and technological privacy. Do you think that students need more privacy? What are some changes you think could be made to ease the concern about student privacy? We will begin with Mr. Bezenthal. Mr. Bezenthal, you have 90 seconds.
Thank you for the question. So, I think anytime we're looking at student privacy, we've got to make sure that our students are aware of what information is out there for them and what information they're putting out on the internet. So, I think we need to have a proactive approach to make sure that students are, students and families are aware of what information is being available. From a board standpoint, we need to look at and make sure that the information that is being released is appropriate and what is allowed by law. But I think the big thing that we need to look at is making sure that people are just aware, students are aware of what information they're potentially putting out and making sure that we're not violating any laws or anything with what information is released.
Mr. Welsh, you will now have the floor.
Yeah, it's similar to what David said. I think there's a lot of things that we need to make sure that we know, students know, staff knows of what can and can't be shared, what information's currently out there. I think we need to also lean on experts in the field in terms of what services we're using, making sure that the third parties or whatever services that we're using are protecting the data of our students, of our educators, of our staff, because we want to make sure that we are, one, staying compliant with the law. And we also want to make sure that everybody's confident that their confidential information stays confidential. And that is something that has been a big concern for the community, that information that's getting out should not be getting out, one way or another, whether it's through data leaks or people talking about things they shouldn't talk about. That's private information. So, I think we need to make sure that we are holding people accountable for that information staying where it is and make sure that we have ways to monitor that.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. That concludes our first round of questions.
Candidates, here's your next question. Curriculum design is one of the most vital things when it comes to education. With the recent controversy in restringing school districts this past year, how do you plan to move forward with the current rules and regulations of how curriculums are designed? Do you believe that anything needs to be changed in how they are created? Mr. Welsh, we will begin with you this time. Your 90 seconds starts now.
Yeah, absolutely. I think the most important thing when we talk about curriculum, it is important to get feedback from the community, from parents, and have transparency in what the curriculum is. I think it's important to know, and the district has to do a good job of explaining, here are the baselines that are laid out for each subject by the state. Then the district has to work to make sure that they are developing a curriculum to teach to these baselines, to make sure everything that's, that we're touching all of those that the state lays out. I think it's important that we lean on the experts in those fields. We have educators that have years of experience, that have advanced degrees in education. Their expertise needs to be weighed more heavily than those who don't have expertise in that area. It's good to get feedback from everybody. A lot of times, those experts know what they're doing. They know how to take feedback. They can address concerns. So, I think it's important that those are out there. But we really need to leave curriculum writing to those that know how to write curriculum, that went to school for it, and that are experts in the field.
Our next candidate to answer will be Mr. Bezenthal. You have 90 seconds.
Similar to what Brad talked about with transparency, I think that is, that's important, right? But when it comes to curriculum writing, I've had a chance to watch our process the last year or so. And I know our district goes through a bit, I believe it's about a three-year process, where curriculum is thoroughly vetted and the resources that are used. I know right now, there's different community roundtables that convene, or community committees that convene to look at what curriculum is being revised and the resources that go into it. So, I think that's important, because then parents can have a voice at the table of what's being taught. But also, like Brad said, is that teachers go to years of training. They are the content experts. So, I feel like we need to make sure that we are trusting their expertise. Doesn't mean that we just take everything face value, but at the same time, we've got to make sure that we're trusting our experts who are in the classroom, teaching our students every day, that the curriculum that's being developed, and again, it's not something that's just dreamed up overnight. We're looking at what the state standards are. We're looking at what best needs need for our community, right? So, again, making sure that we trust our experts who are in the classroom, who are with the material every day, knowing that they're going to create the best possible curriculum for our students.
Thank you, Mr. Bezenthal. Candidates, here's your third general question. You are both supported and endorsed by the Missouri National Education Association, also known as the MNEA. For this year's election, the NEA is the largest teacher and educator union in the nation with over 3 million members, including many teachers and staff members in the Wentzville School District. If you choose to do so, how would you involve yourself with not only this union, but other teachers' unions in the state? Mr. Bezenthal, we will begin with you. You have 90 seconds to answer.
So, the NEA, that's something, I'm actually a member of my local NEA with Fort Zumalt, FZEA. And I think it's vital to have, no matter what the organization is, whether it's MSTAA or any group that can offer a perspective to help us best help educate our students, right? We need to make sure that all parties have a seat at the table to know what is going on, to be able to, again, make sure that we're moving, every decision that's made with the district, that our students are at the forefront of all those decision makings. So, I know having, having experience with my teacher union and just being able to be a part of the collective bargaining process when it comes to salaries and benefits and those kinds of negotiations, it's important to be able to have that voice that can back you, both in the classroom and outside of the classroom. And again, I joined mine originally because of, I wanted to be able to have a voice in those negotiations as I grew in my teaching career. So, not only the NEA, but MSTAA, I mean, any group that's represented within our district needs to be able to have a voice in their working conditions and ultimately what our students' learning conditions are. So, I would listen to everybody and take everybody's input in any kind of decision that's made.
Thank you, Mr. Bezenthal. Mr. Welsh, you will now have 90 seconds to answer.
So, kind of the process everybody knows going through this, we interviewed with the WNEA. So, they've got people that they nominate. There's about 750-ish teachers in the Wentzville NEA. So, these are teachers in the district. These are your neighbors. These are the people you go to church with. You know, a lot of times, people like to say, well, these people believe everything the NEA or the national NEA stands for, and list a bunch of things that really don't pertain to anything that I've talked about with anybody locally here. So, my being endorsed by the NEA was just a conversation that I had with those teachers. We've had conversations with MSTAA. I've had conversations with teachers who aren't a part of any union. I think in this role as a board member, you've got to take everybody equally. You've got to talk to everybody, get opinions from every teacher, every administrator, because all their opinions matter. Every teacher, regardless if they're NEA, MSTAA, or not even all, is a vital part of our children's education and making sure that they are getting what they need to best support their students.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Candidates, here's your fourth general question. Communication and transparency are key components of building trust within the community. Within the previous months, there have been a few legal instances causing the community to feel a lack of transparency. What problems do you think are currently causing these issues? And what changes would you like to ensure that communication between the district, board, and community is as transparent as possible? Mr. Welsh, we will begin with you. You have 90 seconds to answer.
Yeah, I think this kind of goes back to that first question you talked about when we talk about privacy. And I think a lot of the communication and transparency concerns that people have is there's information that's being leaked out or that's spreading about the community that should not be getting out. There are things that are confidential that are somehow getting out there, and that creates a lack of trust within the community when things that are supposed to stay confidential become nonconfidential. I think we need to hold those accountable for the, if there's a way to prove where that's coming from, we need to be able to hold those people accountable, whether it's the board, whether it's administration, whether it's staff. We need to make sure that we are keeping confidential information confidential. We also need to make sure that we are being transparent, which I believe we are in everything that we do as a district. I also think it's important that we have more town halls, more two-way communication. Right now, there's a lot of one-way communication where we're not getting a lot of feedback. So, I think it's important to set up, whether it be small groups of teachers, administrators, with the board, with administration, to bring up issues that schools are having, because right now, there's a lot of one-way communication. So, I think the more two-way communication and conversations we can have, the more productive we can be and the better we can be at understanding each other's needs.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Mr. Bezenthal, you will now have 90 seconds to answer.
Thank you. So, I agree with a lot of what Brad says. I think a lot of it comes from a transparency standpoint, again, making sure that information that is being shared is appropriate to be shared, again, from legal guidelines. But something that I would be a very big proponent of is making sure, whether it's a roundtable, I mentioned last year, I think it'd be a great idea to have one or two board members who are assigned a feeder pattern where we can get more direct feedback and have a conversation going. The public comment sessions before board meetings are great, but you just get a little snapshot of what's going on. I think it'd be better and better serve our district if we had more ongoing communication, more ongoing conversations. The roundtables that the district has done this year, I've had a chance to attend three out of the four. I thought were phenomenal, just to be able to see what each feeder pattern has going on, you know, from a showcase standpoint, but then also be able to see what those buildings' needs are and what's going there. So, I think continuing something like that in some fashion would be very beneficial. Again, because we've got to make sure that even though our district, we focus a lot of times on communication with our parents of the students that are in the district, but we also have residents that don't have kids in the district anymore. So, we've got to make sure that we're communicating with them as well and finding different avenues. And again, being able to have that ongoing conversation would be good.
Thank you, Mr. Bezenthal. Candidates, here's your fifth and final general question. According to the Wentzville School District website, the district is the fastest-growing school district in the 21st century and currently has an enrollment of 17,400 students across 22 schools. How do you plan to address the fast rate of growth while maintaining a quality education for all of the students? What strategies would you propose to help manage current school capacity issues? Mr. Bezenthal, we will begin with you. You have 90 seconds to answer.
So, yeah, I think growth is something, as a district, we're going to continue to experience for a while. So, we've got to make sure first and foremost that we are being good stewards of our finances, making sure that we have the resources that we need to be able to meet the continued demand. I know there's more subdivisions coming online. So, we need to make sure that not only are we building, potentially building or reallocating the spaces that we have where we're overcapacity in some areas, but making sure that we're not letting parts of the district fall behind. And I don't mean fall behind academically, but making sure that they also have the same resources and they get the same attention that the newer buildings are get. I know we were just at the Heritage and heard the needs that they have, being legacy buildings. We've got to make sure that we're addressing all areas of the district with the resources that are available. So, again, we've got to be cognizant to know that we're going to continue to grow for a while. The short answer would be to build new buildings, but we've got to make sure that we're utilizing the resources that we have currently before we necessarily look at building something if we've got the space already that can be repurposed or utilized within the district to help meet the needs of our students. But again, making sure that we're focused on, making sure that no matter what part of the district our students are in, they have access to the same curriculum, the same resources, the same technology throughout the district.
Thank you, Mr. Bezenthal. Mr. Welsh, you will now have 90 seconds to answer.
Yes, similar kind of what David said, this is probably one of the most challenging issues we're facing out of the district. And it's got to be something that the board and administration has to take a strategic look at and plan how we are going to move forward, because we can't be making quick decisions on financing and getting down the road to where we're having to invest a lot of money quickly as opposed to growing strategically. So, we need to make sure that we are utilizing all the buildings that we have right now. We need to do a better job of making sure all the buildings feel equitable. You know, right now, I know that's not the case in a lot of buildings. A lot of buildings feel like they've been left behind. So, if we do look at having to possibly, whether it's build or look at rebounding zones, one, the district needs to be transparent with what they want to do, so parents, families aren't caught off guard. We also need to make it feel like if students or families are moving from one building to another, that it's not a negative. Moving from one building to another should be, feel the same within the district, because we all have the same education. We all have great teachers. We need to make sure that that is how it feels when we move districts. The other thing we need to do that is imperative right now is we need to keep and retain the best educators we have, because as we grow and we get more students, it becomes more and more expensive to hire good quality people. And it's way more expensive to go get teachers than it is to retain the teachers, staff, and administration you already have. So, that's key that we need to make sure that we're doing it as a district as we continue to grow.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. This concludes our final round of general questions. Viewers, before we begin part two, remember to submit your own questions to the candidates by the link at the bottom of your screen.
Questions from the survey will be answered during part two. Once again, if you would like to submit questions of your own, the link will be found at the bottom of your screen. We will now take a 10-minute intermission.
We thank you for joining us this evening.
During the break, our student event organizers sorted through the viewer questions submitted during part one and have selected five different questions for each candidate to answer. All candidates will respond to the same question and will have 90 seconds to do so.
Here's your first question. Within the past few years, some comments have been made about the growing disconnect between the board members and the community they represent. Do you think that there is a cause that has led to this growing disconnect? If so, what steps would you take to minimize that disconnection and ensure the community is well represented? Mr. Welsh, we will begin with you.
Yeah, I think overall, I don't know that there's really a disconnection. I think if there has been, it was in the past, because, you know, COVID, everyone was disconnected. We were disconnected for, you know, a year, two years. And now, we've gotten out of that. We're past that. I think the disconnect is just with, there's some loud minorities on different pockets of things, but I think overall, the community's connected. I think the district does an awesome job through, whether it be sports, with their feeder patterns. You know, my kids are in elementary school, but they work with the junior high and high school teams for basketball. So, they get a sense of community through all that. So, I think the district does a good job promoting, you know, community in the district. Can we improve? Absolutely. I think there's ways we can improve. We can do, like I said, more roundtables, town halls. I do think we need to increase the communication that we have to where we can talk about things more. But I think overall, we are improving in that aspect, because we had a couple of years where, yeah, absolutely, everybody was disconnected. That wasn't just a Wentzville thing. That was pretty much everywhere.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Mr. Bezenthal, you are next.
So, for me, this question really comes back to communication, making sure that as a board member, we're communicating with the community. I don't know necessarily a disconnect, but I think a lot of it is just making sure that everybody has a chance to offer their opinion, to have their voice be heard, and then ultimately make sure that we're coming together to work towards the common good of making sure that we're educating our students the best that we can and focusing on policies that will do that. So, going back to what we mentioned earlier about having community events where we can bring the community together, have open discussion, open dialogue, just to be able to know what's going on from a board level standpoint, but also being able to hear from the community to make sure that we are hearing what's going on across the district. Because even though at times it feels like our community is small, we're also a very large district with, you know, four comprehensive high schools. We've got a number of elementary schools, middle schools, Pierce Hall, all across the board. So, making sure that communication is ongoing to make sure that we're meeting the needs of everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Bezenthal. That concludes our responses to the first question. We will now move on.
Last year, a bill known as School Choice was passed by the Missouri House. This bill would allow for students to attend a public school outside of their home district while still receiving the funding for that student. Do you think this bill will have an impact on students, staff, and the district? What do you think the biggest challenges are regarding this bill? And if elected, how do you plan to address this issue? Mr. Bezenthal, you have the floor.
Thank you. So, anytime we're talking about public tax dollars, again, with a public school being so underfunded as we are from a state level, we've got to make sure that we are being fiscally responsible with the resources that we do have. And we've got to make sure that we're trying to keep as many resources in our district as possible so we can best educate our students. So, hopefully, for us, this wouldn't necessarily be an issue, because hopefully, we're going to be continually attracting students in. But I've also been pretty outspoken that school choice for public schools is not something that's going to help them. Again, we've got to make sure that we're putting forth the best district possible, keeping our students, keeping our staff, keeping the financial resources that are here. But if we would start to lose resources, then we have to look at partnering with community organizations, applying for grants and different things, so we can make sure that not only can we continue to offer the same services that we have, but also look to be able to continue to approve upon what we do offer our students. So, we become a district that students and families want to move to. My wife and I moved to this, when we moved to this area, we looked to buy our first home. We wanted to come to Wentzville because of how good the schools were. And I want that to be the case for families for generations to come. I want my kids to want to stay in this area as they get older because of the school district. And the school district is the backbone of our community, and we want it to be as strong as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Bezenthal. Mr. Welsh, you are up.
So, there's a number of issues with school choice that, you know, I've been pretty outspoken about that. School choice does not benefit the public education. It's been pretty well documented. It's going to take public dollars out, put it in the private sector. And as David mentioned, we're already extremely underfunded as it is. That's out of our hands, though. That's not a decision the school board's going to make. That's something that the state level's going to make. So, it's our job as a board to ensure that we are making Wentzville the best district possible. How do we attract, you know, students that would want to be here? You know, one of the things that we would have to work out is how does this work with athletics? You know, I think that's something that was brought up to me as a concern. If somebody isn't playing at one school, they're going to move to another school. And it kind of takes that spirit out of community. And when you talk about disconnection, I think that's something that would lead to more disconnection, because you wouldn't have that kind of relationship with your neighbor if they go to a different school than you do. Or you can just kind of go wherever you want to go. But it's really not up to you. It's up to the school to choose to accept you. I think that's what a lot of people misunderstand, that if you wanted to go to another district, you can automatically go. No, it's up to that school if they're going to take you. That's not the case with public education. Public education takes everybody. We do the best we can to give everybody an equal opportunity at a great education. And as a board, we've got to do our best to make sure Wentzville does that regardless of what the state does.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Here's your third question. The Wentzville School District states that its vision is to maximize the potential of every student within the district. How would you make sure that this vision is upheld? Do you believe in implementing diversity, equity, and inclusion, also known as DEI, within the school district would be an effective way to do that? If not, how would you maximize student potential? Mr. Welsh, we will begin with you.
So, DEI has become a term that means a lot of different things to different people. We live in a diverse community. So, I think it's important that we represent everybody in the community and that everybody in the community feels like they're a part of it. So, that's one thing we need to make sure we're doing. When we talk about equity, equity is making sure that every student, no matter what, has an opportunity at that grade of education. If you've got a student who can't see well, equity is them sitting closer to the board so they can see better. It's not just giving them a grade because they can't see well. It's giving them the tools so they have a fair shot at exceeding. When we talk about inclusion, again, it's the same thing of making sure everybody feels that they are part of the district. What the school can do is they can give every student opportunities to explore different career paths. I think with the new program they rolled out, we're getting students opportunity to look at different career paths outside of just the four-year college. I also think on the front side, too, that we are doing a better job and we continue to expand and get students into the district early with our ECC programs. The faster we can get kids in, we can help them, teach them skills to maximize their potential. The earlier we can get them in the district, the better. So, I think, I love that we've, you know, expanded reach. We've expanded the ECC. I think that's going to help our academics down the line. It's going to give kids more opportunities. It's going to make them more excited to learn and explore different things that they might have a passion for.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Mr. Bezenthal, you are next.
So, as a high school teacher myself, I value diversity in my classroom, right? I want to have all different perspectives, all different mindsets in the room, because then that allows us to learn from each other and allows us to grow and gain perspective that you may not normally necessarily have. So, I know it's a buzzword, DEI. It's seen by some as being evil. But really, it's something that as our students go on out into the workforce beyond high school, they're going to be working with people of all different races, genders, ethnicities, you name it. So, it's important that at the, while they're in school with us, that we are exposing them and giving them as many opportunities as possible. Same thing with equity and inclusion, right? It's making sure that a kid that needs access to a resource or sitting closer to the board or whatever it might be to allow them to engage in the material the same as one of their peers and allowing them to do that in the same environment and not having, not removing kids from a classroom. Like, again, it's so important that kids can learn from each other and just, and be able to interact and grow. And it's what's going to make to interact and grow, and it's what's going to make all of our children well-rounded, contributing members of society. So for me, continuing what we do, I love the Career Pathway Program that the district rolled out in the fall. I think it's great to show kids that there's more opportunities beyond just a four-year degree. And I also love the idea of getting our high school kids into the middle school and elementaries to mentor what's to come.
Thank you, Mr. Bezenthal. That concludes our response to the last question. We will now move on. Here's the fourth audience question. Mr. Bezenthal, you will start us off. As previously stated, you are both endorsed by the Missouri NEA. How does this endorsement influence your educational values and goals for the district? If you were not endorsed by the NEA, would there be any changes in your perspectives on education? Mr. Bezenthal, you have the floor.
Thank you. So for me, I mean, my passion, my being is education. I love teaching. So whether I was endorsed by the NEA or not, I still am a voice for teachers. I'm a voice for parents with students with special needs. Both my kids had an IEP or a 504. So for me, it's making sure that all of our students have access to learn the best that they can. So endorsement or not, again, my passion, my, what gets me up in the morning is teaching, is being in the classroom, seeing my students' lightbulb moment go off and when they finally connect with the material, which that would happen no matter, no matter what my endorsement would be or what union I'd be a member of. It's all about making sure that our kids are equipped with the skills to be the future leaders of our society, whatever they choose to go on and do, whether it be going into an apprentice program, a trade school, going on to a four-year degree. You know, we're going to need all contributing members of our society, no matter what career path. So for me, again, at the end of the day, I'm an educator at heart. It's what I love doing, it's the only thing I see myself ever doing is being a teacher. I just love being in the classroom and seeing our future leaders, bakers, musicians, et cetera, excel and grow the best they can.
Thank you, Mr. Bezenthal. Mr. Welsh, you will be our final speaker.
It's a pretty easy question. I didn't get in this because I was seeking endorsements, I got in this because I wanted to advocate for students, for educators. I met with anybody who wanted to talk to with me, whether I agreed with them or not, it sought out, talking to people intentionally that didn't agree with me, because I wanted to learn their perspective of why their opinion was different than mine. So for me, no, it has no bearing on what I perceive education to be at all.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. This will now be the final question for the night. This past year, the WSD began implementing programs such as Leader in Me and Zello as a way to help prepare students with leadership skills and career preparation. With this implementation, there are concerns from staff, students, and parents about these programs. How do you plan to address the issues brought up by these programs while still preparing students for the future? Mr. Welsh, you will start us off.
You know, I think we, education's changing, society's changing. As we look at how fast technology is advancing, we have to prepare our students with soft skills. You know, how do we handle our emotions? How do we navigate relationships? How do we have disagreements with people and still get things accomplished? That's what Leader in Me does. How do we set goals? How do you hold yourself accountable? These are things that are, every student should want to learn, that we need to be teaching as a district. When you get out into a career path and you're going for a job, you can give people information. People can learn information on a subject. What they can't, what is harder to teach is how to manage different people, how to talk to people that you disagree with and still get things done. I think, too, if you look at our district, and we constantly are comparing ourselves to neighboring districts, neighboring districts have been doing Leader in Me for a while, their academic scores are better, you know? So I don't think there is a, I don't, I think there's a correlation there. So I think when you talk to educators, overwhelmingly educators have advocated for it, students have advocated for it. If there are children or parents that don't want to be involved, they can opt out. I think that that is key. If you want to opt your student out, you absolutely have the right to do that and honor those, or honor those and make sure that there's something else for them to do during that time. But we need to trust our educators that they are putting programs out there that are going to prepare our students for after school.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Mr. Bezenthal, you will be our final speaker to respond.
Thank you. So for me, this question again comes back to communication, right? Anytime a new program, a new initiative is being brought out, you know, parents just want to know what's going on and what's being involved. So I think communication is key to making sure that we're being transparent with the community to know, here's what's involved, here's why we're looking at doing this. And then any kind of program that gets implemented, you've got to make sure that you give it time in order to figure out, is it really being beneficial? Like Brad mentioned, other districts in our area have some of these very same programs, and they've proven successful. So we need to see what are they doing, what can we do, again, to make sure that we're giving our students the best, well-rounded education. Again, I go back to being a secondary teacher, you know, like Brad mentioned, the soft skills are what industry wants from our students. They can teach them the hard skills, how to manufacture, whatever it might be, or whatever the specific trade is, they can help fine-tune that. But it's the soft skills that they really, they look for. Can they work together with a team? Can they agree to disagree? Those kinds of things. So any kind of program, no matter what it is, is going to have people that love it, people that hate it. Again, it comes back to communication and making sure that any issues that people have with it is being heard, and we look to see, is there a way that it can be possibly minimized? Or what, again, is going to be the best for all of our students?
Thank you, Mr. Bezenthal. With that, we conclude the final round of questioning for this evening. Each candidate will now be given 60 seconds for a closing statement. Mr. Welsh, you may go first.
First of all, again, I just want to say thank you. This is a fantastic event. I think it's, showing up matters. I think, look at the candidates that show up, look at the candidates that engage with the community. And like I've told people, there's a lot of information out there, there's a lot of generic information from everybody. Ask a teacher who they support, get their opinion, get people that are dealing with us every day. And the most important thing you can do is vote. Get out April 2nd and vote, talk to your neighbors and vote. You can vote early now at Element Church, or I believe at the Election Authority until the 29th. If you have questions, reach out. Appreciate all the support we've gotten out there. I appreciate you guys for putting this on, this is an awesome event. I hope you continue to do it. I hope you're not discouraged by those that choose not to participate in it, because if you want to represent the district, you need to show up with the students you're asking to represent. So I appreciate you guys doing this, this is an awesome experience for you and us. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Welsh. Mr. Bezenthal, you are the final speaker.
Thanks. And again, like Brad just said, thank you guys for putting this on. Moderators, you guys have done a phenomenal job. Everybody, back house, that's the right term, everybody's done a great job. And I loved being a part of this last year, I'm loving being a part of it this year. And like Brad said, take notice of who has been showing up to the events, whether it's the PTA meetings, PTO meetings, the town hall tonight for you guys. Like he said, don't get discouraged by others not showing up, continue to do what you're doing, because this is an awesome learning experience for you and it's an awesome event for us. Also, for me, as an educator, my heart is public education. My soul is making sure that our students are getting the things that they need and educating our future society. Where some of our others that are running, they took the opportunity earlier this week to attend a rally that is fully focused on defunding public education. So when you go vote, and again, make sure you go vote, take that in account as knowing that who's been showing up and who has been here and who's going to be here for all the students, all the families of the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bezenthal. That concludes tonight's town hall meeting. We would like to thank our candidates for their time, and there are viewers at home for joining us tonight. A special thanks to our student team who volunteered their time to make this event possible. Each candidate's bios and email addresses can be found on the WSD website under About Our District on the Board of Education page. We encourage you to read each candidate's submitted bios to learn more about all four candidates. Please remember to go out and vote on Tuesday, April 2nd. The deadline to register to vote for the upcoming election has passed, but absentee voting has begun, if you will not be able to attend the day of. Be sure to follow us on Facebook at WSDBOE Town Hall for all information regarding the town hall, recaps of tonight's event, and election updates. Once again, please remember to go vote on April 2nd. To all candidates, we wish you the best of luck. Thank you for joining us, and good night.